Okay, the meeting will now come to order. We'll begin with introduction of members and seating of alternates. So we'll begin with town staff and we'll start with Dawn. And Dan?
Dan Beray, town planner.
Okay, any other town staff? Okay, for commission members, my name is Bob Ellsworth. Shintel?
Shintel Foster.
Rob?
Robert Taylor.
Okay, and there will be no alternates to seat, so we'll move on. We do have a quorum of three. So we have a revised agenda. We'll just be receiving in an additional application. Application twenty-two dash zero five. So may I have a motion to accept the revised agenda? And a second?
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye. Aye opposed? Okay, the revised agenda is accepted. We'll start our regular meeting. We have three applications to receive in tonight. Application twenty-two dash zero two, two sixty-four Free Stone Avenue. Request for special permit modification for conversion of existing manufacturing space into warehousing of cars, motorcycles, boats, and jet skis. Application and property of Global Free Stone LLC. Assessors map twenty, lot one seventy-nine, zone I. Any discussion on that one at this point? Okay, next application is twenty-two dash zero four, ninety-eight East Main Street. Request for two lot subdivision, application and property of Amy and Richard Moran. Assessors map twenty-nine, lot twenty-three, zone R ten. Anything on that? Okay, and then the third one is application twenty-two dash zero five, twelve Payne Boulevard. Request for special permit for special event October Farm Festival. Application of River Ridge Farm and property owned by Q O P L L C. Assessors map fifteen, lot one, zone R twenty-five. Anything new on that? Anything to discuss at this point? Okay, hearing none. Next category is other. And this has to do with application twenty-two dash zero three, fifty-five South Road. Request for a two lot subdivision. Application and property of Kathleen Kavanaugh, assessors map seventy-eight, lot eighteen, zone RR. Public hearing will be at our next meeting, which is September fifteenth. Okay, next item of business and is old business, and this is where we're going to discuss updates to our zoning regulations regarding cannabis.
Yeah, so what I gave you guys at the beginning of the meeting was just what Bob had sent me that you had worked on with, with the former CEO, John. It did, it seemed involved alcoholic liquor. At this point, he had struck the locational requirements for alcoholic liquor. We certainly can, would talk about whether you still want to do that or not, as well as if you'd like to do that for cannabis as well. And then he, he had, you know, had three categories. Retail store selling cannabis and/or cannabis products, cultivation and cannabis for sale, and cannabis manufacturing or processing. And whether they'd be allowed in the business zones and industrial zones. Really, I just wanted to get a feel of, you know, where you guys are, what you thought since you last left off. I know it's been a bit of time since you've talked about this. And just kind of look for a direction from, from you three for now, so I can prepare a little more, you know, regulation language, kind of aligning what your thoughts are, and then we can get input, next meeting from the, the other members who aren't present.
So I, I just have a question. I'm trying to remember where we were with this. Maybe you can remember. Remember John was, went out and spoke with, at least with the liquor part of this?
Right.
I believe he went to the, a couple of the local business owners and talked to them about this change, and I think they were against it. But I don't think we received any public comment on that. It was just more John going around informally asking. And I think that was before we lost everyone.
And I don't know why that wa- why was that?
I think it was just more to prevent, like, a big box store coming in and snagging a permit, and then like opening shop like right across the street from Brownstone Bottle Shop or something, and being a direct competitor. It was something along with, I think it was a competition issue.
But, right, but how does that play into this, this location requirement thing that was, that was struck?
That? I don't really remember. I, I just know that was, I think, where we last discussed it. And I mean, that's something that we certainly, you know, would encourage any public comment on that. You know, it's something that, you know, the town feels strongly about, or the local businesses feel, you know, strongly about, whether to keep it or, do we really need it? Because I recall it being one of those old blue laws.
Right.
Or at least that's what we thought it was.
That's what we thought it was. But, but, and then there was the other issue of, why are we having the cannabis thing follow the alcohol thing? Remember that whole discussion of whether it should or not?
Whether it should, right.
Whether it should just be its own thing?
Right. So?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I got all these microphones. You'd think I'd use one.
Thank you, Dana.
Sorry about that.
So I guess, you know, kind of a basic question is, do we want to address any, proposed changes to alcoholic liquor sales right now, or should we just focus on cannabis?
That just be left alone?
Right now, I would, I think we could just leave that one alone. And if down the road we feel like that it's something we want to change, and we can, you know, ask for public comment on it again, and see what, you know, local businesses want. Because they're, they're going to be the ones who are going to be most impacted by the change.
Yep.
It won't be immediate, but it could be, you know, two, three, four, five years down the road. So I don't see a rush on making that change. It's not going to make a difference like the, I mean, the cannabis stuff would.
Right. So I tend to agree. So why don't we focus our attention on retail cannabis now?
Right, so we would go back, we would just go back on this, to just leaving all of the alcohol stuff as it was.
Okay.
Because that's what our understanding was, that nobody really wanted them to change.
Yeah, and just for your information, there's a state law that only allows one package store per twenty-five hundred people. We already have three. We're under ten thousand. We, we couldn't even have a package store if we wanted to, anywhere. So whether you change this or not, it wouldn't have any impact as to whether one could be cited here or not.
I think the, the concern wasn't more that we'd be adding a license or a permit. It would be more like, say, if Gildersley Package Store decides they want to close up shop and sell the business and sell their permit.
Yeah.
That would free up, you know, an additional permit, and without the location requirement, it would move it from, you know, it could potentially move it from being on one end of the town to right next door to somebody.
That, that's true, yep.
And I think that was the, the more, the bigger concern, rather than, you know, the town all of a sudden having a large influx of residents that, you know, pops us over, and we get a, we, you know, get the opportunity for a fourth permit. But other than that, I mean, I, you know, we definitely can hold off on the liquor stuff. For cannabis, the retail store. I know we had a public comment that was from the permit application that we approved, asking us to limit the number of retail stores. And I think that's fair, because his business model is based off around what the state originally had passed.
Which was one in twenty, one for twenty thousand?
One in twenty-five, I think, thousand?
Yeah, twenty-five.
I don't see the need to have that for, like, cultivators, or, you know, manufacturing. But for retailers, I mean, your storefront's pretty much the, you know, thing that drives people in, you know. But when it comes to, you know, cultivators and manufacturing, and, you know, bakers, you, you can sell anywhere to any of the other establishments. So it's, you know, you can have, be, again, across the street from your competitor, and it wouldn't make a difference. So I, I could, you know, definitely support limiting retail establishments to one permit per town.
I, I have a, I, I think that's, I can go along with that. I, I do have a question about having cannabis items for sale in stores. Like, you're not a, and I guess we don't have that ability yet. That's not part of what the state is allowing, but down the road, could, I'm just throwing it out there. Is that something that could happen, where you could sell those little cannabis things at, at another store?
They would need to change state law, and I don't think we're anywhere close to that, just with the amount of security they require at these establishments. You know, it's not like down south where they, you know, you can walk into the Rite Aid or, you know, a gas station and buy alcohol. We're still, you know, a little further behind, I guess, in approving those kind of things up here. So I, I don't think that's, that's coming anytime soon.
Connecticut also closed the loophole that was caused by the two thousand, two thousand and eighteen Farm Bill, where they technically legalized THC that was derived from hemp.
Oh, really?
It's, it's a weird loophole, but it, it's like, one of, like, I think it's like Delta nine is what's actually like a Schedule One drug, and Delta eight is not. And it's a very technical thing that I like, I don't know it well enough, but I just know that there is a loophole that Connecticut closed, so we wouldn't have to worry about, like, I mean, you might be able to see CBD products at, you know, retailers like that.
Well, yeah, you see those all over the place.
Yeah, but you wouldn't see hemp-derived THC in Connecticut.
All right.
So I just want to be clear in my mind. We're going to focus our attention on retail establishments for cannabis. So what does that mean as far as cultivation and bakers or any of the other functions? What?
Well, I think we still need regulations for all of it, but when it comes to, when it comes to putting a cap on the number of facilities you can have, we're only talking about doing that for the retail piece.
But the location requirements and so on and so forth?
We still have to talk about all of, we still have to review all of that.
For cultivation and manufacturing?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with Shintel on that.
Okay, got it.
Because like, one thing I, I saw and hear is right now, cannabis manufacturing or processing would be allowed in the B three zone. I don't think that would be appropriate for the Main Street to have a cultivator. I think that's more in the industrial zone or one of the other, other commercial zones. That might be more viable. But yes, certainly something that you guys consider and give me direction on, and we can take it from there.
So we're saying, one of the proposals is allowing cultivation facilities in the industrial zone only?
Well, if you wanted it in, in, in the B one or B two, that might, might be a possibility, but it's certainly in, in your purview. You know, you also could think about whether you want it in the restricted industrial as well. You know, it's down by more like the Four Corners and Oakwood Soccer Facility and that kind of stuff. So, yeah, right now, the existing cultivator we have went, went under manufacturing down, down in the industrial zone.
Right. And what thoughts on that?
Well, I think that makes more sense for, you said, manufacturing and processing.
Yeah.
And, and?
It, it would be cultiv-, yeah, it'd be cultivation, yeah, yeah.
And we're assuming cultivation is indoor cultivation?
Yeah, I believe if the regulations or the state statutes only require, or only permit indoor cultivation.
Yeah, for, I think the security purposes. The facility at forty-seven Lower Main is, is pretty, pretty secure. Yeah.
Appears to be.
So are we going to put this on the calendar for?
I was thinking I would come back with maybe a little bit of a change in formatting and how we would accomplish that through the regulations. And then we could discuss that at the next meeting with more of the board members to see if they have any more input. And then we can discuss, you know, finalizing the draft regulations and getting a public hearing scheduled and stuff. I mean, we have, we have, you know, the timeframe of the moratorium, so we have time. Certainly, you know, I'm not trying to delay this or anything like that, but we, you know, we could have a few meetings just to hash this out, make sure you guys are happy, and then schedule a public hearing and have plenty of time to get the regs updated when the moratorium is done.
So I was just pulling up the zoning map and looking at that, and, and kind of thinking about what kind of impact, like, say, a cultivator or a manufacturing would have. I mean, I understand you wouldn't want that on, like, Main Street, but I mean, there's, you know, definitely business zoning sections along sixty-six that, you know, could possibly, you know, like, be a good location for, you know, one of those types of businesses that I don't think would be, you know, would cause a huge impact on that. So you might want to at least think about, you know, broadening that a little bit to have some permissible uses in some of the business districts, not, maybe not all of them, just some, so.
And we'll put that down on the list of things to think about.
Right, so let's, if we can give Dan some ideas, so he can come up with, you know, some proposed regulations.
Well, more like B three as opposed to B, I mean, B two as opposed to B three, basically.
Yeah, that, that's easy, so if you guys, we can hash that out and I can turn that around quickly. It's really whatever you, you guys decide. Oh, I think the light went out again.
Oh.
Like, the B one and B two business sections look like they would be fine. And we can restrict, you know, the, you know, cultivation and manufacturing businesses in the B three, which is pretty much Main Street. After that, it would just be industrial. That, I mean, I don't, I think that's approved with special permits, so.
And planned, planned industrial too, the paint.
Yeah, so you guys can just think about whether each of those uses is appropriate in those zones, and then we can come back and talk about that. The only other thought, you know, is if it, in some of these zones, if you think they are going to be close to residences, and I think the one impact that you could say from the forty-seven Lower Main operation is, you can smell that. You, you're coming over the bridge when they're operating at certain times. You, you can smell that. So, you know, whether you want to have an increased setback or screening or something, I don't know if plant screening's going to help, but just, just to keep that in mind, that there could be, if it was to go next, near residences, that there would be a somewhat of an impact potentially on, on the smell, because it, you're driving over the bridge, it's pretty, pretty noticeable, so.
I wonder with, with having more of those things around, I wonder if they're looking at getting better filtration and doing that kind of thing.
Yeah, I could look into that maybe and give you guys some ideas.
Well, I'm just curious, because I would imagine that other people are expressing the same concern. I mean, some, I guess some people would find that offensive.
The other thing too is that I'm not sure if the state's finalized their regulations yet. So, I mean, I know we have the statutes, but the last time I checked, like, I think earlier this year, the state was still working its way through all the, you know, the nitty gritty regulations. And I think they were only proposed, but that was like, I think probably like February, last time I looked, so.
I think I saw something in the paper that said that they gave licenses out to the first six or five or six people. Did you see that?
I think so, yeah. I think they're, they're focusing on cultivators right now, because you got to get the cultivators out, up and running in order for them to get product to the retailers.
Oh, I thought they were the, I thought they were the retailers. Maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, to Rob's point, I think the law stipulates a certain level of cultivation in terms of the amount of product that's available before it can, retailers can get up and running. So I think there is, there is a level, a threshold that needs to be met in terms of production.
Plus, once they get the plants going, they still have to do the testing on it, and that's going to take additional time. So it's not like, you know, they go and pick the bud and they ship it off to a retailer. It's, there's a bunch of steps and processes that have to go, and everything has to be tracked from seed to sale. So it's, it's not a, as simple as it is of just growing something out in, like, your yard or something. It's actually pretty complicated, which is good, I think, for, at least for this new industry, so.
Other thoughts for discussion tonight?
No, this is just a, a general discussion. This isn't a, we're not, we don't have a public hearing on this yet.
Oh, no.
Okay.
Nope. No, this is just to kind of give Dan some idea about how to translate our wishes into regulation talk. That's kind of, you know, we'll ask him to do that, and then obviously.
Yeah, I might reformat this a little bit. Maybe put the definitions in the definition section and refer back to that. I, I don't want to get too crazy with footnotes and, you know, or ten, eleven, twelve. I don't want to page your footnotes in, in the regs. So I think I might just like put the moratorium, add a, a series of definitions that, you know, this, this will refer back to rather than have it in the footnotes.
For the moratorium, we can just make that, like, on the top of the?
Well, I, no, so that, that'll, section nine one eight, the moratorium, that'll just get taken out of the regs entirely. And I'll just, I may just stick all that stuff proposed, stick all those definitions in the definition section, just have a cannabis definition section.
All this stuff is already defined in the statutes. Is that something we need to repeat?
Yeah, I'd like to put it in the regs. Yeah, I, from, from a staff perspective, I, I don't want, I want as little gray area as possible for interpretation. I'd like, personally, I want to point to something and say, this is what you got to do, this is what it is. When you get into interpretation of regulations, that's where people get unhappy with you. Because it turns into a judgment call on, on the CEO's call at that point. And minimizing that, I think, makes the regulations clearer, easier to use for the public, and it just makes it easier to, to regulate from a, a staff perspective. So I, I would probably recommend, yeah, just putting the definitions in. It's, it's pretty easy, and it keeps things clean.
Any chance, next time we actually start, like, talking about this in a little bit more detail, we can get?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Well, I was going to say, we can get some samples from what other towns, because I know there's a couple of towns that have already passed their own regulations.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can look around to see what some neighboring municipalities have done. One thing I know that surprised me actually was Middletown also, I believe, limited cannabis retail to one, one store for a city of that size.
For the town?
Yeah, for all of Middletown, which, that surprised me, so. That's certainly something, yeah. I, I can look into what the different towns have done. But a lot of them seem to be, at least in, in our area and our size, keeping it at one.
I think I read East Hampton's moratorium is expiring in October.
Okay, yeah, I can speak with Jeremy over there, see what they're thinking about as well. And I guess a caveat is even where in towns prohibiting them, there are delivery services that will be legal. So even if your town prohibits the retail sale of cannabis in a cannabis shop, you can still get delivered to your house. So there is a little bit of, you know.
Jeez.
So. And that's one of the things I want to make sure that we have all clearly defined in here what all these things are. So I don't think it's a problem if delivery service starts in town, because they're just going to the retailer and bringing that to the customer. They're not storing stuff on site, or they don't have the security risk or the potential for a negative impact on the, on the community. But it's still something to, to be good to, to account for.
Wouldn't have thought of delivery service for that.
How about drone deliveries?
I'm sure, I'm sure Amazon will, will get on that when they, when they can, but, uh.
Okay, other thoughts? Anything else tonight, this general discussion?
Are they changing when these zoning regulations go into effect? I think it says April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Yeah.
We missed that.
Yep.
Okay, then, we'll move on to staff report. Any correspondence, Sean, Dan, that you want to talk about?
Uh, no, we have none.
Okay. Anything else under staff report?
Nope, I, I still have to nail down the accessory apartment regulations. Exactly the changes. I think it's just the eight hundred maximum to a thousand, but I, I want to double check that. And I, I'm going to work with John Guskowski, our, our consultant planner and EDC consultant on that one as well, just to get some input on him, from him. There are no bond reductions. I haven't, since we have a whole nother year on land use training, I didn't think that was as big of a. I haven't, since we have a whole nother year on land use training, I didn't think that was as big of a priority as, as it was.
Oh, did you want to, I wonder if there was something that I mentioned to you about something?
Yes, there was, there was something.
Something I mentioned about something.
That was, uh-oh.
Well.
I know.
Okay.
Do you want, do you, do you know what it was? It was about checking out, checking the sites out?
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Do you want to tell Dan that or?
Dave, can I? People hearing.
I'm not talking in my microphone.
You're not, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. So what was it?
So Chantel, Chantel had the thought of just kind of having a discussion about the, the helpfulness of visiting sites.
Oh, for sidewalks?
Yeah, for, well, and maybe not formal sidewalks by the commission, but, you know, a drive-by, you know, stop and look at the property that we're talking about. I think in a lot of cases, it's very helpful to me to actually see the property, the area, the land that we're talking about.
And this, this came up because we were talking about doing training classes. And when I went to that training class, you know, when I first started, I was signed up for a training. Clearly, I needed some training. And I was signed up for training down at the Extension Center. And one of the things, one of the big takeaways that I got from that training was that you should always go to look, it, you know, whenever possible, you should always go to look at a site that you're going to be discussing. Because yeah, you get the plans and you get all that stuff, but you want to look at what you're talking about. And it just seemed to me when I was listening on that last Zoom, when I was listening to some of the other comments, it seemed as though some people hadn't actually gone to the site. And I just thought it was a good reminder or people didn't think of it. I would not have thought of that unless I had gone to that training. You know, I needed somebody to tell me, hey, you should be going to the site and looking at it. It was, it was very helpful to do that. So I just wanted to mention that to the, to, you know, just to make sure that everybody knew that that's really a, a really helpful thing to do.
Do you, do you want me to put that?
No, I just, I just want to make sure like we've got a lot of new people, you know.
Well, so yeah, I just don't know if you want to say that when more of them are here.
Well, it just, I.
No, I, I think.
I communicated somehow, that's all.
Okay. I could, I could send out a little, a little email or something. Because yeah, it's good to go to the site, I totally agree. You just don't want to interact with the applicant onsite or ask questions outside of the public hearing. That's, that's the only caveat I would, I would make.
No, we just drive by.
Yeah, yeah, it does give you good reference.
Driving by is one thing if you're on, you know, public land, but it would, might turn more of it into an issue if you actually get out of your car and go on the property without permission.
Yeah, sometimes it could get tricky.
Yeah. If it's a public parking, if it's a parking lot, say like two sixty-four. Yeah, I don't, I don't think you're going to get any, but if it was like, I'm going to hop this fence or go to skate or.
I'm not suggesting.
I, hey, you never know.
And there, there was actually one thing that we couldn't really look at because you couldn't get, you couldn't get in. And I didn't hop the fence.
Okay. You thought about it.
But I, but I do, you know, you know what I'm saying? Like people, it's really helpful to go. And I know you do that as a general practice.
Try to, yeah.
Right, yeah. And, and, you know, I have done it just because, as I said, somebody said that that's what you should do.
Well, and I guess my comment to that is if you guys ever think you need to see the site and you haven't been able to see the site, we can always do a sidewalk.
Right.
You can do a special meeting, do a, you know, publish it, do a sidewalk. Can't ask a lot of questions there, but at least you can orientate yourself on the property and get some firsthand, you know, knowledge. So.
That's a good thing to keep in mind.
Yeah, that's always a possibility.
Well, and we did that once. I remember.
We did, once, yeah.
We had a sidewalk somewhere.
Yeah, I remember the place off of sixty-six.
Yeah, and we couldn't ask any questions and we just walked around. That's all we could do.
Yep. Yeah, so it's open to the public too. And they can give you some sort of, you know, locational direction, being the applicant or whoever's representing the applicant there. But yeah, it should just be general, general sidewalks. There's, there's not really any substantive questions. Those need to be asked in the public hearing.
Yeah, but anything like, you know, a subdivision, you just, you can drive by, you can look at it. For a business that's doing this kind of stuff, I drove all, all around that, that whole thing just to look at. And, you know, you can see the rock loads, you can see all, you know, all of the work that's gone on.
Yeah.
It's helpful.
And Google Earth and Google Maps are good too, you know, to kind of give an idea of the area, yeah.
Yeah. Well, we are, we are going to get GIS hopefully in the next year. So we're doing some, some land use technology improvements. So we're going to do digitization.
What is GIS, Dan? What is GIS?
Geographic information.
Yeah, so that was my old job, way back when. So it's a map, mapping software that you guys are all very used, used to. Most towns have that. Exactly, actually, every town in Middlesex County does, except us. So it, it, you know, it has, you know, zoning on there, wetlands, you know, all the layers, aerial photos, stuff like that. And so it's just a, you know, has all your property lines on there as well. So, well, we're going to do that along with digitizing all the land use land records. And then, and then online permitting. So we, we got funding for that at the Board of Selectmen's meeting a couple of weeks ago. So.
Good. Great. Well, that was a good staff report. Okay, anything else?
That's all.
Okay. Next item is public comment. We have no members of the public in the room here. Anyone online? Nothing in chat. Okay. Yes.
One thing.
Sure.
Last meeting, when we had that technical error with the internet connection.
Yep.
It raised a little bit of an interesting question, mostly of if we don't have members physically present, but we have like alternates who are physically present.
Okay.
Like who should be priority when it comes to, you know, being like a voting member that, for that meeting? And it's only something that's, I'd say, I'll come up only because of like Zoom meetings and doing these hybrid settings. It's, I don't think that we have any policy on it in the town. I'm not sure how we'd go about establishing something like that. It might be, you know, we could just create an informal rule that could be like, you know, alternates that are present versus a member who's present via Zoom would be, you know, would take priority versus to kind of avoid.
Oh, as far as being seated, you mean? As far as being seated for the meeting?
So at the last meeting, somebody could have, somebody, an alternate could have taken my spot when I dumped off.
If you do want to do that, I got to run that by Carrie. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure if we can do that.
Well, that's why I'm just bringing it up as a, you know, it's a question.
Okay.
Not really a, you know, like this is a, that's something that could be repeatable. And so it's just a, you know, when we're doing these hybrid meetings, it's a, okay, we had it happen once early into hybrid meetings. What's the possibility could happen again? Slim, but it could, so we might as well address it rather than, you know.
Yeah, I will find that out for you. I believe the selectmen though are also going to be discussing at an upcoming meeting whether we're going to continue doing hybrid meetings or not. I, my, my guess is we won't be in a, in a couple of months, moving forward. We'll just be back to one hundred percent in person, but that's for them to decide.
It'd be disappointing if we get rid of it. I mean, right now, we don't have much viewership. But now we have some of the, the bigger meetings. People do enjoy listening in and, you know, participating and being able to see it from home. So.
Yep.
That and we're being recorded and, you know, it, I don't know, I liked having everything recorded.
When, when we have the meetings though, will they not be recorded?
Oh, no, they're, they're always recorded, yeah.
They're going to still be recorded.
Yeah.
Well, I just remember when I was on the board about we didn't have recorded meetings. So.
Yeah, our meetings are always recorded because if there's ever a legal challenge, we have to get a transcript of the meeting. You know, provide the whole record. So yeah, everything, everything we do is cataloged and recorded.
But it would be good to understand what the protocol should be if this situation does arise.
Yeah, I'll throw out the question to Carrie. I got, I got some stuff to follow up with her on anyways.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, no public comment in chat. So then the next item would be to approve the minutes from August eighteenth. And we can't because we do not have a quorum of members that were present that night. So we'll defer that to our next meeting. And then the next item would be a motion to adjourn, please. And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Okay, the meeting is adjourned.
Oh, thank you. Wow, that was so easy. That was so much.